Depends on which side of the river you're on, which side of the lagoon you're on. Fremont Street's basically a divider.
Mm-hmm.
But over, over on the other side. So it's, it's complicated.
No, this would have been the park that's more in the, in the area where the roundabouts are.
Yeah, over by City Hall.
Uh, no, no, the other side of the lagoon.
Okay, then that's Monterey.
Yeah, they had a Monterey sign on it.
Chip, you'd know.
They have a nice, they have a nice soccer field over there.
Yeah, it's a cute little soccer, exactly. Cute little soccer field. The neighborhood's called, the neighborhood's called Laguna Grande. Um, and then on the other side of North Fremont, actually Asher lives there, it's called Casanova Oaknall. There's, uh, 16 distinctive neighborhoods in, um, in Monterey, all, all of which have names. Uh, Spaghetti Hill is not one of them.
Old Monterey, new Monterey.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is Britt, just wanting to remind the members of the public who are joining the meeting to please keep your voice, uh, your device muted. And I'm hoping my sound is a little bit better today than it was yesterday.
Much better.
And how, and how do you mute?
You, uh, star six, or if you're on a phone, uh, the actual mute button on your phone will work. Star six will mute you and unmute you.
I always like the fact Bobby puts a tie on. Very professional.
Like that?
Yeah, Chip's got an ascot.
A tie and, and an untucked shirt. Not you, Chip, me. Luckily I have long pants on today. Normally I'm in shorts.
Yeah. Well, having the internet in the house is quite interesting for me, so very exciting.
This is Britt, just again reminding those people, uh, the members of the public who joined the meeting to please keep your, your device muted until the mayor calls for public comment. This eliminates the background noise and any distortion. I can mute your device for you if I start hearing background noise.
That procedural point noted, I will note that it's now 4:30 on January 5th, 2021. We are the Carmel by the City Council. Call us, we need order. Britt, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barron?
Here.
Forlito?
Yes, here.
Tice?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Richards?
Here.
Mayor Potter?
Yeah.
Hey, we have a quorum.
Excellent, we can conduct tonight's business. So the first item before us is public appearances, an item, opportunity for any member of the public to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Three-minute limitation on that testimony. If you'd like to speak, please state your name for the record. I'll open the public hearing, up with appearance portion. Is there anybody wishing to speak?
I would. Is that okay, Britt?
Sure, is this Joe?
Okay, yes.
Go ahead, Joe.
Okay. Joe Todd Carmel. I apologize for interrupting the meeting yesterday. I was having difficulty with my sound and I didn't know you'd started and you were already ready for your, uh, uh, closed session, so I apologize. It's just, but today I wanted to, uh, suggest and ask you for the future, if you would put on your future agenda at some point about the wine tasting rooms and also about the real estate offices. And I have spoken, uh, Marnie and I did speak, so, uh, it's in process, you know, in progress. But I'm just, that's the request. If some, I know you've got other things that are very, very important, but for the future, if you could, attend to the wine tasting rooms and real estate offices. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. So anybody else wishing to speak tonight?
Mayor, we have quite a few people on the call. I just, um, anticipate that many people are here to speak on the scenic item. But we can wait just a few here, just to allow anybody who's, um, having a hard time, uh, mute, unmuting their device, which is star six. And this would be for any, uh-huh, go ahead.
This is Tim Allen, and Dale suggested I, I speak on Carmel Cares and Carmel Gives. Is this the appropriate time to do that?
Tim, that's actually an item on consent. My guess is that somebody's gonna pull that. If they don't, I will, just to comment.
Okay.
If you could speak then, that would be a good time, I think.
Thank you, just let me know. I'll go mute.
Thanks, Tim. Anybody else?
Hard for me to go mute.
Britt, what do you think?
I think you're probably okay with that. I think we've allowed enough time for the, the, um, public appearances.
All right, close the public appearance item, move on then to announcements. City manager, Chip, what do you got?
Uh, yes, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Happy New Year to, uh, to our entire community. Two words of thanks, one, uh, again to Marnie Waffle for, uh, very ably stewarding the Community Planning and Building Department through a very tumultuous time, very busy time, um, in that department. I just wanted to, uh, give a shout out to Marnie. And then to, uh, to Maxine Gulo, who last week, you know, we think it's gonna be a quiet week between Christmas and New Year's. Uh, well, maybe we don't think so, but it certainly never is in our little village. Uh, Maxine did a great job last week stewarding the village. Uh, I was in lovely Pacific Grove, um, uh, last week and, uh, and, and Maxine did a great job running the city. So thanks to, to both of them. I also wanted to remind the public that, um, uh, of the law of somewhat unintended consequences with the, uh, newest shelter in place and the mandatory takeout-only food. We have seen an incredible glut of, uh, of garbage in our public, uh, waste facilities. Um, that got overwhelmed this past weekend, so, um, Mr. Harari has worked with Green Waste, our solid waste disposal company, and his own staff, uh, to ensure that we, we police those, uh, uh, all our, all our public waste cans. And again, just, uh, apologies to the community, uh, we'll, uh, we'll do a better job of making sure we clean up. So that's what I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chip. Brian, I don't believe you have anything to report of a closed session, am I correct?
Well, we did have two closed sessions yesterday. One was a conference with real property negotiators with regards to the Forest Theater and the lease with the Sunset Cultural Center. No, no reportable, uh, action on that one. And then the other was a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure litigation, one case, and there's also no reportable action on that item.
Thank you, Brian. Councilmembers' announcements, anybody with any announcements? Carrie?
Yes, um, I just want to mention that the Climate Change Committee is meeting, um, next, uh, on January 21st at 3:30. And Jeff's gonna help me out with this. And, um, the Waste Management District is going to give a terrific presentation on, uh, carbon issues and how they're minimizing, uh, their carbon footprint. So if anybody's interested in that, uh, please, uh, stay tuned and join us on January 21st. Jeff's gonna tell me who the second, uh, we're having another presentation, so he'll tell me during his, his part of, um, uh, appearance announcements. I also want to do it, I've had several emails from people that are using the library services. And I just want to shout out to the library team who are making their services accessible even during COVID. And, um, so, um, even though the library's shut, people are still getting books, they're still getting services. So, uh, I just wanna, uh, do a shout out to, um, the library team, so thank you.
Excellent, Carrie, well said. Anybody else? Bobby?
Yeah, just back to what Chip was saying about, uh, Green Waste. I did reach out to them and, on the first, because the town wasn't looking so hot. And they called me back yesterday and told me that, as per their contract, they are, they do not work on the first. So that was part of the problem and why we had so much on the streets.
And if I might just pile on a little bit on that topic for a moment. I believe it was the proprietor of Mission Bistro, Chip, that took it upon himself to take his pickup, go out and collect the garbage on the streets and then found, contacted Public Works, asked where he could dispose of it. And also I think, uh, maybe Dale Byrne knows a bit of a facilitator there too, and coordinated that effort by restaurateur to go out. Because of his concern for the appearance of the city, he was good enough to go out and do that on his own. I think that goes to a lot of credit to a man who, you know, certainly has his opinions about the operations of the city, but really is willing to pitch in when the time is right and was much needed this past weekend. So many thanks to him. Any other comments?
Yes, I would like, uh...
Excuse me, excuse me, this is, uh, council comments.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're, Karen, your face is not, I can't see it. I actually thought you were butting in from the public. You're hidden by, hold on, you're hidden by the lower bar.
Okay.
There you are, there you are. Thank you.
I'm going inadvertently trying to get off a couple times. I am, um, prepared to go to the Ambag meeting on the 13th, and I'm looking forward to being the representative for that. I also wanted to mention something about litter. I have been, uh, doing some, uh, car surveys of Highway 1, and it's pretty appalling, the litter that's out there right now. So, uh, if you have any ideas about that, I'm also gonna be on that litter task force, which I hope will get reinstituted very quickly, because we have a real problem. And we have such a beautiful area, to see it so marred by litter is just really disheartening. So, uh, I would enjoy hearing from any of you if you have ideas about the litter. And if you have any comments that you won't need to take to Ambag, I would also, uh, be very grateful. We would, uh, contact you about that, so thank you very much.
Karen, I appreciate you volunteering for that group. Thank you. All right, unless there's any other comments, we'll move on to the consent calendar. There are nine items on the consent calendar. I already announced that we would be pulling item number, uh, four for appreciation of donations for Carmel Cares. Is there anybody else wanting to pull an item? Jeff?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to pull for discussion item number six and item number nine.
Alrighty. Those are for discussion. And remember, which, which one, Jeff, uh, seven? Six and nine?
Pardon, item number six and item number nine. Uh, mail, mail delivery and sidewalk vending.
Right. All right. So could we, uh, mine is simply a comment, but we do have a public comment too. We have a motion to approve the balance of the consent then.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? Is there anybody in the public wishing to speak an item on the consent calendar, other than the ones that have been pulled? I don't hear anybody. Do we have a motion and a second? Uh, roll call, please, Britt?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Forlito?
Yes.
Tice?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Hi.
Hey, it passes with five yes votes.
Okay, why don't we go to item number six, which is resolution, accepting donations from Carmel Cares, a volunteer organization. Chip, do you want to just intro this briefly, so for the public, and then Tim Allen, I think, wanted to speak to this?
Um, yes, sir, sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, this is, uh, uh, consistent with our policy of acknowledging and accepting gifts. Um, but it's also an opportunity for us to, uh, celebrate and thank, um, people like Mr. Allen and, and, and his team. Mr., uh, you know, Dale's, Dale's team of Carmel Cares, Carmel Gives. And so it's just, it's just thanks and, and consistent with our, our policy of accepting gifts. So I think we should turn to Mr. Allen and, and allow him a couple minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Tim?
Well, I'm unmuted, so watch out. Anyway, you're welcome, number one. Tim Allen here, you know, first I want to thank Bob Harari for the kind words in his consent agenda about our efforts over the past several months with Carmel Gives and Carmel Cares. I started Carmel Gives back in May to support businesses and individuals impacted by COVID. In October, I joined the board of Carmel Cares when Dale Byrne, who is also my project manager for Carmel Gives, incorporated his nonprofit. We understand the two names are a bit confusing. The story behind that, I'll, I'll tell you some other time. But both movements work hand in hand to conduct win-win projects that are helping businesses and those in need in Carmel and surrounding communities. And working with volunteers to keep Carmel beautiful, safe, and inviting. We feel fortunate in a position to create these movements in these challenging times. And I'd like to reassure you that we greatly value and appreciate our close working relationship and partnership with the city and plan to continue it well into the future. We'd like to point out that in the last week, we've created a new project called the Carmel Restaurant Food Production Grant Program. With the oversight of the community foundation, we are investing a minimum of $100,000 to fund our financially challenged local restaurants to produce high-quality and nutritious meals for those in need on the peninsula. In just the first eight weeks, six restaurants were approved. We have already delivered over 700 delicious meals to eight different groups. And this is after another restaurant had delivered 800 meals to the boys and girls' families since Thanksgiving on another grant. Yesterday, we have made grants for another nine restaurants. Hopefully, we will receive more grant requests and do another six next week. It also looks like this program will be moving into Monterey with a donor that wants to provide meals to the medical staff at CHOMP. We understand that time is of the essence, and we want to inject this money to our local businesses as quick as possible. Um, this is a big deal. Mission Bistro, who like every other restaurant in Carmel, had been struggling greatly, is going to be partnering with Meals on Wheels to produce a large percentage of their food for the month of January. And we are looking at how we can continue that into the future. That's a lot of food, and we'll take a concerted effort by the owner and its staff, but they're committed to making it happen. It's amazing, really. Katie's Place, who had closed, now opening with a limited menu, so they can support deliveries to their chosen beneficiary, the Domicile Violet Steakhouse in Monterey, and sell to-go sandwiches and salads to the public. Uh, there are many stories like this that will be relating to our social marketing efforts. We're building a team to support all this activity, using some talented but out-of-action volunteers from the chamber visiting, and greatly expanding the touchpoints for the food. Anyone that wants to contribute can do so by going to CarmelGives.org. We'd like to thank you, the city, all of our donors, and the community foundation who are working closely with our team to make this program happen and continue the movement, which will benefit our community and the surrounding communities for years to come. Again, we're fortunate to be in a position to help, and we appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Is there anybody else wishing to speak to this item? Tim, I don't think there is. I'm gonna just comment that I, I was very, very impressed by this effort. I mean, it's indicative of a town that really has constituents and community members who care about the well-being of the community. Eight, eighty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-eight, forty-one dollars. Twelve different contributions ranging from cell phones to tractors to sidewalk buffers, all much-needed drain cleaners, everything. It's really, really, Tim, it's very, very impressive that you're out there doing that. I know I speak to the entire council when I say, "Thank you, thank you very, very much for your efforts." You've got a real workhorse there with Dale, um, so congratulations on a job well done. I'm glad to hear it's nowhere near, uh, done over either. Anybody else wish to comment?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I would just like to thank you to both Tim and Dale.
Yeah, well done.
You're welcome. And we, we appreciate all the community that's done for all of us over the years. So we, we're, we love what we're doing and we're gonna keep doing it.
Oh boy, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you both.
All right, we're gonna have a most separate motion on that, too. We'll go ahead and adopt. Um, I'd go ahead and move adoption of Resolution 2021-003.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Britt, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Forlito?
Yes.
Tice?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Hi.
Hey, it passes with five yes votes.
Just for clarification, Mr. Mayor, it was Resolution 2021-001. I think you read the next one, sir.
Oh, you're right, I did, I'm sorry, yeah.
No, I'm sorry.
Uh, thank you for that clarification. Um, all right, so then the next item is item number six. Jeff, this was, uh, authorizing the city administrator to execute amendment number two, mail service agreement with Peninsula Messenger Service, and approve, uh, budget amendment for the fiscal year 2020, 2021, and adopt the budget. Jeff, do you want to get Sharon to give a presentation briefly?
I don't need the presentation, but I would defer to, um, my colleagues.
I think for the public certification, we probably should get a brief synopsis.
And Sharon is, uh, ready to, to give that brief, brief synopsis and answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
All right, operative being brief, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, councilmembers. The city, uh, contracts with, uh, a courier service to provide mail service. This is Peninsula Messenger Service. Uh, the current agreement expired on December 31st of, uh, 2020, uh, 2020, just a few days ago. Uh, the purpose of the agenda item is to extend the contract through the end of the current fiscal year, which will be June 30th of 2021. Uh, in addition, the recommended action includes approving an allocation to the budget for the mail delivery service. When we put together the budget, uh, again, that was in the spring, uh, in March, April, we used our best estimate of, uh, what the demand may be. However, in light of, uh, COVID-19, we've received an increase in service. Therefore, in order to, uh, continue, uh, to pay for what we project to be the increased cost, we do, uh, are proposing a budget amendment. Again, we have historically averaged about 145, uh, addresses or up to 185. Uh, we have proposed in the staff report, uh, a contract costs up to a maximum of 200 addresses a month. The additional cost of the service would be absorbed by line item savings and other areas of the budget. Uh, therefore, there would be no net impact to the, uh, overall adopted budget at this point in time. And I can answer any questions that council may have about this item.
Jeff, you pull this.
Yes, I did not, I did not have any questions of staff. I would like to just have a little bit of a council discussion, but I don't know about members of the public.
I have a question, I have a question.
Good, go ahead, Karen.
Could you state the total amount of money that will be going towards this, uh, delivery of mail? Sharon, can you give us the total of the money?
I, I will, uh, just, uh, one moment. I'm referring here. So, um, it would be close to, see, uh, we have allocated 50,000 and we anticipate, uh, needing additional, 58,000, so that's about a little, uh, close to 110,000.
And that is the total cost of this service for a fiscal year?
Uh, correct, councilmember. That is based on the possibility of, uh, what we've already spent to date and assuming that there would be a maximum increase of, uh, 200, uh, addresses for, from December through June. So there could be, uh, uh, less costs if, uh, those numbers diminish over the next, uh, remaining course of the fiscal year.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the public wishing to speak to this item tonight? Britt, what are you seeing?
I'm looking, I don't see anyone that is unmuted. We, we can give just a little bit of a delay here, just give people some time. We're probably okay.
All right, I'll close the public comment period, bring the back your counsel for deliberations, Jeff?
Yes, thank you. So this goes back to a discussion that Chip and I have been having sort of off and on for a couple of months. And we'd like to sort of make the council aware of this and how I feel about this. Um, and it mostly relates to moving around, moving money around inside of the budget. So it relates to Exhibit A, uh, the, the dollar mouse and Exhibit A on the packet, which is on page 103. And Chip and I, uh, staff and I have a sort of a, a bit of a philosophical disagreement about, what, what the budget is. And I think, I think that Chip, and, and Chip, you'll forgive me for paraphrasing this, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong. I think Chip's goal is to have the budget, have all of the individual numbers be in the black at the end of the year. So it looks like we have sort of accurately and conservatively budgeted when we, when we get to 20, when we get to the end of the fiscal year. And my feeling is that if we have all of the numbers in black at the end of the year, we won't really be able to sort of forensically examine where we were wrong in our projections at the beginning of the year. So I don't, I don't really have a, I don't have any issue at all with extending the program and extending the staff's authority to extend this program, at least for this current fiscal year. Though like councilmember Forlito, I'm concerned about the cost. But what I do have a problem with right now, um, as we sit here today, are the, are the transfers in Exhibit A. Because I feel like that's a little bit of moving some money around. You know, I remember back when we were having the bunch of discussions that the mayor, the water authority was gonna go out of, go out of, go out of business, and I wonder now why we let money go into that category back at the beginning of June anyway. And I know that we're having a budget meeting. I know that we're gonna do sort of a mid-year roundup of the budget, a mid-year review of the budget next month. And I would ask the council if we could postpone, um, these budget adjustments until we do the budget adjustments, whatever staff is going to propose at the end of the month, so that we end of, during, in February, so that we do this in sort of an orderly fashion and we can track, you know, we can more easily track where in the budget we've sort of misallocated money, or where we have misedimated money that we, you know, we thought we would spend this much and we spent over, or we thought we spent this much and we spent, we, we're, now we're under. And I'm afraid that if we, I'm afraid that if we start moving this money around sort of ad hoc, like staff has recommended, like staff is asking us to do in this Exhibit A, then we'll lose a little bit of that history and that we won't be smarter when we go to develop future years budgets. So I really, this, so to me, this is just an accounting issue, not a, not a, not a spending money issue. And I'd like for us to tackle all of these budget amendments, whatever they are, uh, next month, as, as a group, as a, as sort of a whole-picture budget, rather than sort of piecemealing all this stuff together.
So, Jeff, before Chip speaks to the disillusionment of the water authority, that didn't happen, that didn't actually happen until about two weeks ago, less than a month ago. So we had to keep it budgeted because the authority was not officially dissolved and the final amount wasn't even known until it was actually done. It appeared that it was gonna be dissolved back in July, but that did not happen because it got extended be, due to the fact that there was some unfinished business that had to be taken care of. So that, that wasn't really any thing that we could, you know, you had to keep it funded because it was an actual ongoing item. Now the money's appeared, so I think that's the answer to that one. Chip, I'm sorry, I cut, I cut in on you.
Oh, no, no, that's, uh, that's a absolutely, uh, perfect, uh, explanation as well, Mr. Mayor. Um, it, it, the, the conversation between, uh, Mr. Barron and I has, has been very, very civil. And my, my explanation has been that the expenditures that we ask you, the increased expenditures are because we want the council's fingerprints on, on spending. Um, and Mr. Barron will, will parlay back to me by saying, "Well, we refinanced, um, uh, Sunset Center, and our debt service payment will be less than we budgeted, isn't that correct?" And my answer is, "Yes, that, that will be correct." And so his, his question to me is, "Why, why do I not bring back cost savings to you? You know, why don't we make those types of budget adjustments?" And my response is that we, uh, we do that at the end of the fiscal year, when we, when we do kind of the true-up and we, um, and, you know, we kind of have it all in and, and we see how we ended the fiscal year. So again, uh, Mr. Barron is, is not incorrect, uh, from, from any perspective, nor is our accounting principles obviously as well. Our policy has been to get the council's, again, fingerprints on, on budget transfers that, that, that will, uh, result in additional, um, uh, spending, uh, on, on the city's behalf, when, when they're relevant, when, when we're doing it, rather than at the end of the fiscal year. I.e., coming, coming to you... coming, coming to you for, for approval rather than at the end of the fiscal year, asking for forgiveness or, or, you know, coming, coming later. So there's not, I don't, I don't think unless we'll turn to Sharon, I don't think there is a problem with waiting until our mid-year budget review, which is again in, at our, at our February meeting. But, but again, we're, we're prideful because we now have accounting principles in place that, such, such as this one, that we didn't have that, that, that long ago. And so we're prideful that, and you know, the next item on your agenda obviously is a very, very clean forensic audit, quite frankly. So we want to keep that up. And again, part of that is, is going through this kind of a budget adjustment process as additional expenditures are incurred or are about to be incurred, Mr. Mayor.
Karen?
Yes. I feel similarly to Councilman Bear. I really, I think we need to own the issues that go over budget and discuss, obviously, why they go over budget, but also if we want to continue to fund things that go over budget. And if we do these transfers, I think it does sort of obscure them just a little bit. And when we have these cost savings, it also, the question comes up as well, why, why did you choose to spend them here and not in other places where we also need money? Furthermore, during the campaign, I heard a lot of comments about mail delivery and the inadequacy of what's going on with the post office locked at certain hours, with mail delivery being late, et cetera, et cetera, with the handicap parking spot, just a lot of issues that came up about our mail. And now that this is becoming such a, a large item in the budget, I'm sure when it started years ago, it was meant to just help a few people out. It was done with very good intention. Now it has grown to a much, much, much larger number than I'm particularly comfortable with. And, you know, when it gets to the point where people are signing up simply because they don't come to the post office, I think it's time for us to consider having a very spirited and future forward discussion of mail delivery in our village. Because I think there are many, many people who would prefer not to come to the post office. And I'm sure the emotions are on the other side as well, the people who really do like it. I think it's not an easy issue to discuss, but I think as these expenses have risen to this degree, it, and that there is concern that some people who aren't necessarily not able to come to the post office, but are choosing not to come to the post office, we need to reexamine the whole issue of mail delivery in our village. So this was an opportune time to bring this up.
And if I may, pardon me, sir.
I said Chip in response and then Bobby.
Yeah, and so just as a reminder on this item, and again, Ms. Felido and Mr. Pirik had, had a conversation about this today. The council did adopt a policy that would create, I always use the wrong word and council member Tice always corrects me. It's not a test, but it's, it's, it's a, a policy that would, that would establish when the city would go ahead and continue to pay the $42, $45 a month for people who are physically unable to retrieve their mail at the US Postal, at their postal box, the US mail office. So we have that, but it was the council's decision, I think a very wise one, to pause and not implement that policy, you know, because in light of COVID. So again, we've seen this increase understandably that, that because of the, the reduced hours and, and the, the necessity to go to the post office where there may be other people maybe closer than six feet from you, that, that the council again wisely decided that we were not going to implement the policy at this point in time. You know, maybe it's something hopefully we don't have to do next year, but I can't agree with, with Ms. Felido more strongly. $108,000 a year, $110,000 a year far exceeds, I think, any vision for the founders of this program. And it's something that has gotten a little bit excessive. And I think we need to ratchet it back. And I think that was the council's policy from, I guess, about a year ago when we discussed this last.
Bobby?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I guess it's kind of a two-parter as, as I'm pleased to know that we are going to, and I was, and I'm looking forward to reexamining the postal service and that messenger service, what it looks like. And I know that it's, you know, I think we rightfully put that on the consent agenda item today to discuss later as we, as we had talked about. But the other thing I have for you, Chip, is isn't there a general rule of accounting for cities? Don't, is it, I mean, are we, are we different in the way we do our accounting than other cities? Or is there seem to be a sort of a general policy for city governments and how they account?
There, there are certainly accounting practices. And again, part of, I think part of the reason that we get clean audits is because we're now applying generally accepted accounting practices. You know, that said as well, I can only, I can only spend under my authority so much money and the, the budget increase in this case exceeds, well, it actually doesn't, but, but the overall amount would, it would exceed my authority by, 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 by twice what I'm allowed to spend. So, but I get, I would recommend, Mr. Richards, that we turn to Sharon and ask Ms. Friedrichsen about those generally accepted accounting practices, please.
Again, good evening, council. Yes, we, the city does follow generally accepted accounting principles. Part of when staff brings forward budget adjustments in isolation versus at mid-year, it's because we know those costs are going to exceed the budget. We have very strong internal controls in place, including in our finance system, that if we are going to exceed the amount that's been allocated for a line item, the system won't allow us to do that. So this is the way we control costs. Otherwise, if we know we're going to be over budget and we keep on spending, then we just have a negative expenditure in individual line accounts and we've exceeded the appropriation limit that you authorized when you adopted the budget. So that's why when we know that there's going to be a cost overrun, we come forward to counsel as soon as we can to make that adjustment so that we're not manually trying to override appropriation levels that you've set. On this particular item, a month, we, we could work with that. We will be bringing forward other adjustments for your consideration. But again, we try to react as responsibly as we can when we know that there's unanticipated costs. Either services are greater than expected, or if we have an emergency repair for a vehicle, we bring those forward to council on the next agenda item again, so that we can keep our budget as close to the reality as possible. And again, to try to make sure that we don't exceed any line item or exceed our appropriation and bring it forward to council for adjustment.
Thank you, Sharon. Jeff, you had your hand up.
Yes, thank you. So Chip, I wasn't going to bring up, I, you know, notice I did not bring up the debt service issue. So next month, when we, next month, when we do, when we have our budget review, will we see budget adjustments for debt service? And so, for example, will we see reviewed number, will we see revised numbers for the amount of TOT that we expect to collect through the rest of the year and the amount of sales tax and measure C money that we expect to collect for the rest of the year? Or will we just see sort of stuff like this? Like, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get at the big picture stuff, not, not, not the stuff that's in this, in this particular adjustment.
Yes, sir. So you, you will see hard numbers that we've received. So if we've received our, our first tranche, and I think, I think Robin did receive our first tranche of real property taxes, the first payments due, that were due on, on December 1st. If we receive those, you will see those. Our, our estimates will not be, they will not be realized. And of course, that is to eliminate the temptation of, of spending money that we don't yet have in hand. The same can be said for, and I just want to remind everyone, Mr. Barron and I have a very, it's, it's a very positive, almost philosophical discussion about this topic. It's not adversarial at all, yet, from my perspective certainly. But, but, but if we have not made a debt service payment yet, we will not, you will not, you will not glean that savings. So, so that would not be included in, in, in the mid-year budget review.
Well, my question, my question, if I, if I may, Mayor, my question mostly relates to, you know, the, from the review that we had last month, it looked like the, it looked like the revenue numbers were going to be under, you know, my Chris reanalysis from looking at the numbers last, last month, especially at the TOT number. Now, I know that things have changed this month. It looked like the TOT number was going to be under. But I see Carrie nodding her head again. She always nods her head at me when I'm talking. And I know that.
She's not nodding off.
I know that, you know, the number is going to be revised down, but what I'm looking for is a revision of the estimate. You know, we started at the beginning of the year with an estimate. And will we have a different estimate next month? So, you know, that reflects on the six months of TOT that we will know about and then the six months of TOT that we don't know about. Like, like it doesn't make sense if our TOT estimate was $2.5 million and I think it was somewhere around there. It doesn't make sense to Carrie, it doesn't make sense to me to carry that number forward through the end of the year if we've already collected $2.4 million in TOT. Like that's, you know, because I think $100,000 in TOT for the last six months perhaps understates what we expect to happen over the last six months. So that, my question to you is, will that, you know, will the TOT number and the sales tax numbers be revised according to, you know, where we expect to be at the end of the year, along with the debt service number, of course?
Yeah, and I think this lies at the heart of, of, of Mr. Barron and I's, our discussion on this topic. What's your general, I, I can tell you that I think our estimate for TOT was revised down to about 2.9, or maybe it was 2.5 this fiscal year. If, if we did not have visitors through the first several periods, we would be revising that number down, you know, so, so that we could, you know, better, have a better estimate for the, the, the perception that, that TOT receipts were going to be lower than expected. We're, we're not going to, we're not going to generally revise that number up because we don't know, on the other hand, what our, again, what our expenses are going to be. And again, that eliminates the temptation to say, well, look, we, we've brought in more money than we expected, let's, let's, let's spend it. You know, one of our, one of our best spenders is Mr. Harari, and he'll appreciate that I'm joking with him, but he can only always find a capital project to spend something on. So I can give you my word, though, that I will bring, I will bring, I will, I will bring our best estimates and certainly our hard, our hard figures to you in, in February, Mr. Barron, and we can have a more robust conversation with, with the council, with the rest of the council and the public on our, our hard receipts as well as our estimates for closing up the remainder of the fiscal year.
So Carrie, you want to speak? And then let's try to bring this back to some action.
I think the challenge here is we, we vote on a budget and then things like more people receiving mail delivery come up. And sometimes we cannot pay people unless we make that budget adjustment. So that's one reason why we have to bring things back, not just on a set timetable. So I guess what Sharon's saying is it's, we, we won't have to pay the messenger service for another month and so we can defer this budget adjustment item to next month. Is that correct?
It's my understanding. Sharon?
Correct. We do have a little bit of money still allocated in a line item to pay the cost for the next month. But again, that is our practice to, to bring these items before you as, as soon as possible so that we can pay vendors for continued services and not exceed our appropriation.
And I do agree with Ms. Felido in terms of we need to have a broader discussion about mail delivery. We've both, we've all gotten emails about the challenges of packages being delivered and not being delivered in the correct place. So at some point, we're going to have to go beyond just the messenger service and delivery. It's going to be more about addresses. So I agree. It's a bigger, bigger issue. Thank you.
So Jeff, why don't you propose a motion here, which I would suspect would be to continue this item?
No, I'm, I'm happy to, with respect, I'm happy to accept Chip's, you know, to sort of, I've, I've registered my objections to what's going on and, you know, I've started this conversation and, and as all these sort of long-term conversations are, I'm happy to, I'm happy to move this along just like it is. And we'll, we'll, I'll work with Chip and we'll see if we can address some of the issues. Before I do that, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'll, I'll just leave it at that.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'm happy to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-003.
I'll second it. A motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Yeah, Britt, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Felido?
Yes.
Tice?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Passes with five yes votes.
All right, then Jeff, item number nine was ordinance 20-2020-009, amending and restating chapter 12.46, sidewalk vending program of the City of Carmel Municipal Code.
Yes, thank you. I will not, I will not be making this motion. I don't think the council would like the motion that I would make. So I would definitely say that last month I voted no on the first reading of this ordinance for reasons that I stated last month, and I will vote the same this month. So we should find someone else to do that.
I had a feeling that was always up. Thank you for your consistency. So would we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to adopt ordinance 2020-009, amending and relating chapter 12.46 sidewalk vending program of the Carmel by the Sea Municipal Court, Municipal Code, which constitutes reading of the title and waiver of the reading of this ordinance.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Britt, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barron?
No.
Felido?
Yes.
Tice?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
It passes with four yes votes with Councilmember Barron voting no.
Thank you. All right, this moves us on to the orders of business. We have item number 10, which is Resolution 2021-005, receiving the comprehensive annual financial report through the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. Chip, did you want to tee this up before we go to Sharon or?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, I just want to, again, I want to share my pride with, with, with the council for their leadership and, and with the team here, you know, Sharon and, and, and Robin and, you know, Maxine and certainly our, our independent auditors and the entire, the entire team of my, my executive team have just done a fantastic job. And I think it's reflected in, in this, in this document. And Robin, last week, applied for, I think, our third GFOA award. That'll be our third in 116 years, 100 and, whatever it is, 104 years, I think. Anyway, we're darn proud of it and I just wanted to extend my, my thanks. And again, we can, we can, we can turn it over. Sharon, are you going to make the slide presentation or is Mr. Siobhan or?
That is correct. Our auditor will be making the presentation and then both Robin and I are on hand to answer any questions that the auditor may not be able to address.
All right, Sharon, and thank you, City Council. My name is Paul Pham. I'm with Siobhan and Associates. I'm one of the partners here. So I appreciate you guys inviting me to share with you guys the results of the FY20 audit. I just, you guys have a copy of the report. Hey, Sharon, do I share the PowerPoint or will you be running the PowerPoint or is everyone just going to look at their hard copies?
Paul, you can either share your screen if that's possible. If not, I know that our city clerk may be able to, to help or, or Robin, our finance manager.
Okay. Yeah, like I can share my screen here. This is your general fund. As far as the fund balance classifications, you'll see that a majority of the general fund is unassigned. You've got a good amount that are committed as well. And then with the other funds, as you would expect, because you have these funds set up for a particular purpose, most of your other governmental funds are restricted in terms of what they can be used for. So that's what this schedule illustrates. Okay, and then as far as our audit results, it was a clean audit, so I want to congratulate your administration for doing a good job of keeping your books and, you know, handling the funds of the city. And definitely commendable as far as getting that GFOA certification. It shows a lot of transparency. Does require a lot of extra work on your team, so yeah, definitely commendable to have that certificate. So our audit, we didn't note any exceptions in any of our audit opinions. We didn't have any material weaknesses that needed to be disclosed. Your team worked with us really well. We didn't have any disagreements with management. There were no significant passed-on adjustments that were noted. So, yeah, with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Paul. Are there any questions by council at this time? I don't see any. Is anybody in the public wishing to speak to this item tonight?
Carrie, did you have your hand?
Well, let's wait until we close the public comment.
After public comment.
Okay. Mayor, I think you're fine.
Close the public comment period, bring it back to council for deliberation and discussion. Carrie?
I just want to, it wasn't many years ago when Chip first got here that, you know, it's wonderful to see, we've come a long way. Chip's absolutely correct. We used to have upwards of 20 to 25 exceptions, which was horrible. So to get it to the point where we have no exception, we have a wonderful audit. I think it points to the fact we are, we also have processes in place, which obviously our previous discussion about the budget points to that. I would encourage the public, when you look at an audit report, it looks like a bunch of numbers, but the first nine pages of this report are beautifully written, and they really characterize what Carmel by the Sea is from a demographic standpoint and from a fiscal standpoint. If you're new to this town, or you haven't had a chance to read up on really what Carmel by the Sea is in a nutshell from a financial perspective and some of our demographics, the first nine pages are terrific. And I would encourage, you don't have to go through the whole thing, but if you, it's very well-written. I commend the staff for the information they have in this report. And of course, the auditor, he had to put all those numbers in there, which are very interesting, but the first nine pages are worth the read. So thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Carrie, thank you for those comments. Bobby?
Yeah, Chip, is this the second or third audit that we've had zero problems?
This is the third, sir.
Yeah, well, congratulations.
So if I might, you know, I really appreciate Carrie's comments about the thought that went into the creation of this document. You know, you talked about the first nine pages. For me, the pages 33 through 37, which is the economic outlook, are very telling. They didn't tell me anything I didn't know already, but they're very, very helpful in realizing that this is very, very much in flux and very much unknown, the future. So that, the caveats that are in there and the warnings that we've already been made aware of are very important, that we understand that the future is so unknown. And we are very, as I said before, we're 76% dependent on taxes as revenue in this city. That's a pretty telling number. And so when we were tourism-based and dependent on those numbers, sales tax, property tax, you know, transient occupancy tax, and special district taxes, it's pretty tough. But I think that this document gives us the warnings that we need, sets out the roadmap. It's a little uncertain, but it certainly is a document that's well-crafted. And to find absolutely no internal material weaknesses in the document is wonderful. I mean, it really speaks well of a city that realizes and a leadership that realizes that if we're going to be responsible to the public, we have to be fiscally responsible. And that is very, very helpful for me as a mayor. When I go out and people say, well, what are you doing for us financially? I say, we're doing the best I can, and if you'd like a good read, grab that document. So, yeah. All right, so we need a motion to adopt, I believe? Yes, resolution. Do we have a motion?
I'm trying to look it up, sorry. I was looking at the document itself, so I apologize for that. There we go. I move that we adopt Resolution 2021-005, receiving the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020.
Second it?
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Britt, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Ferreto?
Yes.
Theis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Passes with five yes votes.
Thank you, guys. Well done. And Chip, again, to your team, well done. Honestly, very impressive. All right, this moves us on to the meeting, the next meeting, which is the item number 11, direction to staff regarding whether or not to pursue intermittent closures on Scenic Road for recreational purposes. Bob Harari, I believe, from Public Works is leading this issue. Chip, did you have any prologue?
I did. I wanted to have a little prologue, Mr. Mayor, and I wanted to start by thanking the many members of the public who have written us, written you. I think we're close to 70 comment letters, which upon reflection, in my return here in the last, whatever it is, five or six years, I can't remember a topic that's engendered quite as many and as many comments. But this is really democracy in action. This is your first blush look at an idea. We encourage you to have a conversation about this idea before we spend any more time on it. We're not proceeding without the council's direction. So again, we've just spent a little bit, a little bit of time with it. Some of the comments were pretty impassioned, and I'll close in a second with my thoughts on that. I just want to remind the public that not only does the council, and this was brought to us by a member of the public who is a resident of the village through a council member, the council has the right to ask to have things added to the agenda, and that's what's happened here tonight. And the mayor and Mayor Protem have honored that request. Not only do they have the right, in some cases, they have somewhat of an obligation, right, to bring the public's business before the public. So again, this is exactly the way democracy should be working locally, and I would venture to guess in our nation. We spent very, very little time on this, again, until you tell us to proceed. If you told us to proceed, as Mr. Harari will tell you, we would do additional survey work. The survey work that was done was done by the gentleman who's the proponent of this idea. We would certainly ask you about returning, going to the Forest and Beach Commission or the Planning Commission for their input to you. So really, what we're looking for from you tonight is a red light or a green light scenario, i.e., staff, go forth and use this kind of a process to further vet this, or no, we're done with this either temporarily or permanently, and we won't bring it back for at least another decade. So I heard, I'll paraphrase a quote that I heard recently from one of our founding fathers. Though he was born in Boston, Mr. Mayor, Benjamin Franklin spent almost 70 years of his life in the, as a proud Philadelphian, my hometown. And he said that, "Passion governs, but rarely does she govern wisely." So as you deliberate this item, I would, and the council is always this way, but I would certainly encourage the public to be genteel and civil in their discussion and realize that this is a proud part of our democracy, which is the right to speak and share your thoughts and have decision-makers deliberate. So I'll conclude there, Mr. Mayor, and we can turn it over to Mr. Harari.
Bob, as far as yours, well said, Chip.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council members, and appreciate the upfront comments, Chip. One thing I just wanted to reiterate about what Chip said is that we are asking for council's direction, and I want to make it clear to the audience, we are not requesting council to make a decision or authorize the closure tonight. That would be at a later date if that were to ever happen. So I can share my screen? Can everybody see my screen? Yep. Okay, so again, this is the direction to staff regarding a possible intermittent closure of Scenic Road for recreational purposes. There was a survey done by Mr. Madras, who I believe is on the phone tonight. He conducted a survey of 43 parents, predominantly of parents of.
I don't see any screen. There's no screen on the public end.
Hey, Bob, hold on one second.
There we go. Thank you.
All right, we're good?
Roll them.
Okay, so Mr. Madras did a survey of 43 parents of schoolchildren. The results of that survey are attached to your agenda report. To summarize the survey results, is that 86% of those 43 people liked the idea of closing Scenic from 13th Avenue to Carmel River State Beach. And that would be a segment that we'll talk about in a moment that goes both through a part of Carmel and through the county, that they liked that idea of closing it, quote, "a great deal." 74% of the 43 people would, or said they would use the closed street a great deal for recreation. And 63% of those surveyed would prefer four weekly closures on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, between 3:00 and 7:00 p.m., and on a Sunday morning from 8:00 to noon. My understanding is that this information was first sent to the county, Monterey County, who then contacted the city. This is the map of what the initial survey requested. It's different than what is discussed at the moment when we talk about Scenic between 8th and Santa Lucia. So in this map, the blue line represents the one-way street of Scenic through the county. It would be from Martin Way to the Carmel State Beach. This is approximately three-quarters of a mile in the county, and the county has between 950 to 1,200 vehicles per day traveling on that section of road. For this initial survey request location, it discussed or recommended from 13th to Martin Way, which is roughly a quarter mile. So again, this path would be all one-way street, one mile long. So we met with the county in November, and Mr. Madras was on that meeting. We made a slight change to request going from 8th Avenue to Carmel River State Beach as a pilot project. So in other words, the limits were extended all the way from 8th all the way down to the Carmel River State Beach. The county was pretty vocal on that meeting, and they said that they are very challenged to be able to implement something like this for the following reasons. So they would have to coordinate with the Coastal Commission. This is a much longer road with a state beach at the end of it. So they might have a little bit more challenges with the Coastal Commission than the city of Carmel would have. They would have to coordinate with the state parks with Carmel River Beach, which gets very busy on summer weekends. Of course, they'd have to get this approved through the County Board of Supervisors. They would need to process a coastal development permit, which could be, and probably would be, appealed to the Coastal Commission. They would require a traffic study and determine how the detours would happen. The difference between, or a big difference, if I might go back one, if you notice all the intersecting streets that the county has, okay, whereas Scenic from 8th to Santa Lucia only has one directly intersecting street, the county has quite a few more. They would need to do a traffic study and determine how the detours would happen. Then, if this were to actually be implemented, they would have to get their equipment and barricades and cones and personnel from their yard in Salinas to come down there three or four times a week to set up the traffic control and then take down the signs. This would impact local access and emergency response, which many people have noted on their letters to us. It would impact law enforcement staff. It would certainly impact our public works staff. They would also, of course, do a survey of the local people who are affected to determine support or opposition. And they also pointed out that it's not budgeted. So in that first meeting we had, we talked about, well, is there anything we could possibly do as a pilot project to see if this, if there's a possibility here to accommodate the request of the people who filled in the survey? So on this map, this shows dark blue, this is our Scenic Road. This is 8th Avenue here, 13th Avenue here, the second star and the third star is Santa The advantages of this is that Scenic Road is isolated from the cross streets. So this 13th intersects, but none of these other streets do. So that's one advantage compared to the county. It doesn't mean it's a good project. It means that it's an advantage from the county. So there would be less detours. We would have detours at 8th, detours at 13th, and detours at Santa Lucia, or in the county there'd be a whole bunch of other additional detours. The city has staff and signage, which is physically closer by, obviously. Public Works and police are right here, so we wouldn't have to drive in from Salinas with our barricades and signs. The Coastal Commission has not been contacted to date on this idea, but of the two possibilities, we believe the Coastal Commission would more likely support this project over the other. It doesn't mean that they would support it. More likely to support this project versus in the county. And we felt as a group that this would be more adaptable for a pilot project, as I mentioned. However, things are all not rosy, as everyone knows, with the city. We have plenty of challenges. First of all, we have not done a formal survey of this road segment. The survey was done of the original road segment that was shown on the prior map. We also have parking impacts. As we know, whenever we need to close Carmel, I'm sorry, when we need to close Scenic, whether it was for COVID reasons or for paving projects for that matter, we had a lot of parking. The red lines are intended to show the extent of parking challenges we would have if we were to close Scenic. That would probably be on like the worst-case scenario, that would be that many parking spaces that would be used up, you never know. And this is the parking. We also have detours at the three intersections, which are shown by the stars. And for those of you who are observant, we had a traffic counter out here last week, so we have some accurate information on traffic counts. And the average width of Scenic Road is 24 feet. FYI. Okay, so now we're asking council to select two options. Of course, there's infinite additional options, but what we're requesting is one, option one would be direct staff to proceed with the evaluation process and return to council. At that point. Commission has not been contacted to date on this idea, but of the two possibilities, we believe the Coastal Commission would more likely support this project over the other. It doesn't mean that they would support it. It would more likely to support this project versus in the county. And we felt as a group that this would be more adaptable for a pilot project, as I mentioned. However, things are all not rosy, as everyone knows, with the, with the city. We have plenty of challenges. First of all, we have not done a formal survey of this road segment. The survey was done of the original road segment that was shown on the prior map. We also have parking impacts. As we know, whenever we need to close Carmel, I'm sorry, when we need to close scenic, whether it was for COVID reasons or for paving projects for that matter, we had a lot of parking. The red lines are intended to show the extent of parking challenges we would have if we were to close scenic. That would probably be on like the worst case scenario. There would be that many parking spaces that would be used up, but you never know. And this is the parking. We also have detours at the three intersections, which are shown by the stars. And for those of you who are observant, we, we had a traffic counter out here last week, so we have some accurate information on traffic counts. And the average width of, of scenic road is 24 feet, FYI. Okay, so now we're asking council to select two options. Of course, there's infinite additional options, but what we're requesting is one, option one would be direct staff to proceed with the evaluation process and return to council at that point to approve or deny the proposal. And we're going to talk more about option one in just a moment. Option two is simply to defer this project at this time. So if council were to direct staff to proceed with option one, the approval process, these are the bullets of things that we would need to do. And maybe there's more things that we would need to do, but we haven't got that far yet. So the first thing we would do is to meet, we intended to meet with the local residents and get their input. So far, I think we had 49 letters of objection and four letters or calls of support. So tonight would also be a good opportunity to get the people who are local to weigh in on this proposal, because frankly, we have not done a survey for this arrangement yet. So we would conduct a more formal survey. We'd also do a survey citywide. We have not yet calculated the cost for staff. However, there's hours of closure that was requested, which is, goes into the evening, three days a week, and then Sunday morning. That would include overtime pay and potentially holiday pay, none of which was budgeted at this point. We would have staffing impacts. This will take away from other duties, and I don't like to remind council, but we did have a staffing decrease this year. We are stretched very, very thin, and this would defer some of the duties that we are doing to other, you know, to this, into the detours. Specifically, streets and sidewalk maintenance would be impacted by doing this work. Cost for signage and variable message board signs. We have some of the signs and barricades. We would probably need a few more, so the cost wouldn't be huge. But we, whenever we closed scenic in the path, in the past, in the past year, anyway, we were using those variable message board signs that cost about $1,000 a weekend. They're helpful, but I don't know if that would be necessary for, for these detours. And of course, that's not budgeted. We, we have 14, I'm sorry, 1,700 vehicles per day traveling on scenic. It peaks at about 250 cars per hour by mid-afternoon. So that's how many cars that we might be turning around on 8th or 13th or whatever during this intermittent closure. We've already talked about the impacts, the street parking on the adjacent streets. Many people, the public eroded in to address that as well. The number and duration of the closures is unknown. The original request, when the county was, for the county option, was four days a week, four hours a day, so that's 16 hours. Each time, each additional time that this were to be implemented is another trip of setting up the barricades, having the police available for monitoring, removing the barricades and signs. So the more number of, the greater the number of days, the more effort it would be and the more cost it would be. Of course, we would need to get Coastal Commission input and fill out a coastal development permanent application, which could certainly be appealed to the Coastal Commission. We need to ensure that COVID restrictions would be adhered to. Now, my understanding is that this survey was intended for long-term, not just during COVID, but potentially indefinitely. Or I could refine that to say during the pilot program. If the pilot program is a month or six months or a year, that would constitute the pilot project. But if we, if we start it while the COVID restrictions are still in place, which is likely, then, or is would be likely, then we would have to make sure that people are wearing their masks and social distancing, which is another challenge. We believe that we would need to, or we should go to the Community Activities Commission, Forest and Beach Commission, and the Planning Commission to get all their input before returning back to council. And then finally, we return to council with all this information, all this data, and ask council to, whether or not to implement or deny the project at that time. So to our recommendations is simple, simply one is to open up for public comments. And I know there's a lot of people on the phone that are eager and anxious to make some comments. But then council, if you would provide direction to staff with option one, so we can proceed with this evaluation and return to council at a later date. Or option two is to defer the project, and that'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bob. Is there any questions to Mr. Harari by council at this time? Carrie, and Carrie, and then Bobby.
Bob, so I just want to clarify the survey. The survey was not put out to any of the scenic property owners. It was mainly for families at the school. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I, yeah, I do not think any of the people who live on scenic were part of that survey.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you.
Bobby, and then Karen.
Yeah, Bob, I just had a question about options one and two. They seem to kind of be a little bit similar. Was there ever thought of an option just to says defer the project, period?
It was in the pine cone.
Well, but I'm asking you, Bob.
This was a, a member of council requested us to take a look at this. And before we proceed with any detailed evaluation, we're double checking with council. Do you want us to pursue this or not? So it's really council's decision if you want to never discuss this again or to discuss this on a future date.
No, I just wanted to show respect to the, to staff, and it seemed like both kind of, one says defer until a later date, and the other one says come back in the next meeting, so.
Oh, it would, it would not be at the next meeting. This will take some time to do our homework if we're, if we're directed to do so.
Thank you, Bob.
Karen.
Yes, I just wanted to ask Bob to clarify, similar to what Councilman Tice asked him, because some of the emails that we received seemed to imply that it was the scenic road residents themselves that wanted to close the, the road and referred to them as elitist. And I wanted you to clarify, it was not the scenic road residents at all that brought this to you. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions for staff at this time before I open it up for public comment? All right, seen none. So Britt, you're going to be the keeper of the turnstile on this one. What I would like to do is I'd like to have Mr. Madras come up and make his presentation, and then follow on. I'll open it up for public testimony. My understanding is there's a lot of people who want to testify on this. So in the interest of eliminating redundancy, if the person before you, after a bit of public testimony, has said the same thing that you have, my experience has been that after about 10 or 15 minutes of public testimony, there's really no new testimony. If you could just say, I agree with the previous speaker, I'd like to see by time to council for deliberation, that might help a little time management here. So if we could do that, Mr. Madras, are you there? And would you be so kind as to speak first? And then don't be hesitant to the others to come forward and speak after that. It's a three-minute limitation on the testimony. Please state your name for the record, and please, if you can eliminate redundancy by saying, I agree with the previous speaker, I disagree, and then you can state your case. But if you agree, that will get a little redundant after a while, I think. Thank you.
Mayor Potter to confirm, will Mr. Madras be limited on his time? Do you want me to give him?
No, he's got the same limitations. This is not a public hearing, per se. It's just a preliminary rough run at it.
Thank you. Mr. Madras, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. When, we're ready when you are.
Great. So my name is Mr. Madfiss.
I'm sorry.
And I, that's fine. I'm a resident, and I do appreciate the time and attention that the staff has given this. It was really great. I like the proposal, and it's been really, really pleasant working with you all. I am a resident here. My, my daughter goes to Carmel River, and our, we created the survey really just to address the issues that, you know, families have been experiencing with shelter in place and the closure of the school. So it wasn't really a long-term proposal, but because school has been closed, and because kids have been really limited in their physical activity, we've just been struggling to find things for, for kids to do. And so my daughter loves to ride her bike and to roller skate, but because there's so few flat roads in Carmel, no roads with bike lanes, it's just, it's been a real challenge. And so we've been trying to go down scenic after her online school, because it's wide enough to social distance. But, you know, the cars there just make it really dangerous and stressful. I did some research, and there are several cities in the region that have shut down streets periodically to vehicle traffic to allow for folks to exercise and walk. And it seems to be going quite well in Santa Cruz and San Francisco. And so our suggestion is just like a pilot project to close a portion of scenic, a few hours a day. And, you know, I, I don't think we ever said four days a week. I think we said a few hours a day, a few days a week. And to be honest, I, I think we'd all be really happy, you know, even if we just tried it out one day, one day a week, a few hours, maybe do it when there's minimal traffic, and just to give us an opportunity to, to exercise and, and social distance. Of course, I mean, my recommendation is that residents who live along scenic would always have access, and as well as any of their friends and relatives, and services that they require. And I would suggest that any signage should be available to indicate their right to have access, and also for emergency service vehicles to access it as well. And I know there are, I mean, limited options for children to ride their bikes and skate in our region, but there's really just not, nothing in Carmel for, for kids to do that. And it just would be nice if we didn't have to get in our car to ride our bike, or sort of roller skate. So I do appreciate the time and attention given to this, and thank you for, for considering.
Thank you for your efforts. Much appreciated. Thank you for your testimony. All right. Is there anybody else wishing to speak tonight? If so, let's get up to the mic.
This is a reminder to unmute your device. You can star six.
Yes, hello?
Hey, go ahead. Your phone number ends in 41.
3141.
Sorry, with a 925 area code.
My area code is 712.
So I'm the 925?
Go ahead.
My, my name is, getting a lot of feedback.
Yeah, I'm, I'm working on it. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. My name is Carrie Ostry. I agree with the previous speaker. If every so often a street can be closed to traffic without imposing too much of a burden to allow our kids to ride their bikes, scooters, roller skates, I feel like it'd be a really positive thing, great event. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next speaker.
Hi.
Go ahead, area code 415. Go ahead.
Hi, yeah, this is Jill Lewis. Do you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Jill.
Hi, yeah, I just wanted to say that I lived in San Francisco for 12 years, and we did this in the park. And it was really wonderful. And it wasn't just for children. It was really for locals, because we were the only ones that knew that the streets were going to be closed then. And we had that access, and every, all the locals could ride bikes and roller blade, and it was just such a great community thing. And it would be so nice, especially with COVID, and having a lot of things closed down, and tourists still trying to come, for just us to know that that was open and available for us. I just think it would be just such a great community thing. And I, I think it's a wonderful proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael McWalters here. May I speak for three minutes, please?
I'm sorry, Michael McWalters?
Michael McWalters here. Thank you. I'm a scenic road resident, two north of 11th. I've got three minutes, and I just would like to run through my questions, and then I'll take the answers offline. First, first comment is that in May of last year, there was a street barricade that went up on scenic with a road closed sign. And my question is, was this unmanned barricade in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act? The staff report under background summary with today's date on it, the first paragraph says, quote, "Last fall, Mr. Madras Carmel resident performed a survey of primarily parents of local schoolchildren to assess their interest of possibly closing scenic road intermittently from 8th Avenue and Carmel through the county and ending at Carmel River State Beach. The results of the survey are included as attachment number one." So I opened attachment number one, and Mr. Madras' first question was, "How much do you like the idea of closing part of scenic drive from 13th to Carmel River State Park a few days a week for a few hours to cars and for pedestrians, cyclists, and skaters?" My question is, where is the survey for closing scenic from 8th Avenue to Santa Lucia? Why, why is there no survey for closing the busiest residential street in Carmel? Now I'm going to quote from the fifth paragraph under background summary, the last sentence, and I'm reading this. "There was also consensus that this would start as a pilot project for a given duration, and then, and then extend or not afterward." And my question is, when and where did the city council reach consensus for closing scenic between 8th and Santa Lucia, and was this meeting open to the public? The word consensus means general agreement. So the five folks on the city council, was it unanimous? Who voted yes? Who voted no to close scenic intermittently? And what were the reasons that you used to close scenic that you reached in your consensus? A couple more questions. How much is it going to cost? Where, where are you going to get the money? And in the staff report, there's no paragraph listing reasons for not closing scenic. And my question there is, why not? So lastly, it begs the question, why are you guys using an invalid survey as the basis to close the busiest residential street in Carmel?
Thank you, sir. So anybody else wishing to speak tonight?
Morgan McCarthy, resident.
Parker, go ahead.
Well, I wholeheartedly agree with the previous speaker's questions. I'd like to have all those answered. And, I mean, sure, gosh, what a bogus survey. I could get a survey together and get 43 people to sign a petition to have whatever council member brought this to the table to be removed. In fact, I think he should resign because it's so preposterous. If you, if this is just a COVID-driven thing, how about you go turn the parking lot at the Sunset Center into a skater's paradise, and they won't be bothering people, and it's more constricted, so they're not flowing up and down with cars pulling out of driveways, or deliveries coming, or friends coming over. It's just an awful, awful, awful idea, and a humongous waste of time and resources. And I, I'd like, if you could share all the letters with everyone that you received. I saw there was a big number of negative ones and just a small portion of positive ones. Be fun to read those off to the public. I just absolutely can't believe that this would ever even be an agenda item at a city council meeting in Carmel, by the sea. So I think you're going to get a lot more backlash when this gets more widely known, because your consensus, as the gentleman said before, of whatever agreement behind whatever closed doors, behind whatever old pal, yeah, that'd be fun to get our kids skating on scenic. Terrible, 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 terrible idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Parker. Next speaker.
Sebastian Miller and Theodora Miller.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
Sebastian Miller, and my daughter Theodora Miller is with me.
Go ahead.
So I disagree with the previous statement, and would add the following. We, and one of the main reasons we should is because it would just be distinctively safer. We've all been locked up for 10 months in quarantine, and the physical activity that we are doing is limited to a few minutes a day. With scenic, then they would be funny. I love to ride my bike there, but it is extremely scary to have cars trying to bump into you. With this new clause, then the possibility of being hit would be much lower, so it would be open for children to skate, and would be greatly improved in our physical activity.
I'd also like to just add my perspective. I mean, that's, that's my nine-year-old daughter. We are residents. We live on 15th Avenue. I, she's, she's almost been hit by cars when, when we bike. I mean, it's, it's not really safe. The prior two callers, I, I don't, maybe, maybe there will come a point in my life when I could understand their perspective and their vehement opposition to this idea. But I mean, it just seems so miserly, and frankly, just smacks of the lack of self-awareness to call in and oppose this thing. I really hope the council doesn't privilege like those kinds of opinions. That's, that's our comment.
Thank you. Your daughter is future in public speaking. Next speaker.
My name is Nicole, Nicole Forrester, and my daughter Najoni would like to speak. She also goes to Carmel River.
Go ahead, Nicole.
Hi, I'm in, I'm
Hi, I'm Najoni Matisis and it's about M-A-D-I-S-S. Also, I love to roller skate, bike, skateboard, scooter, but there's not enough places around here to do all that stuff. So me and my dad go ski, go roller skating on Scenic Drive. But there's a lot of like cars. Should be great to close down it.
Yeah, my name is Nicole. I'm her mother. I go for runs in that area as well. I have during all different times of the day. And it's very unsafe for walkers who are visiting our area as well as for runners, which are quite a few of us. Even now with COVID, there's more people, more tourists visiting our area all times of the day. And I think just blocking off some of those streets, it might be helpful to those of us that live in the area that we can feel safe with our kids out there. And then with the playgrounds closed and then also for social distancing. I think there's enough space to accommodate some of Scenic Drive for those of us that like to exercise and get outside.
Thank you, Nicole. Thank you. Next speaker.
Brian McCarthy, resident of Marina.
Go ahead, Brian.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. I, you know, I listened to Mr. Matisis and his intentions, I think, are really great. I hear the passion in his voice, appreciate the effort he took to run this survey and to look after the youth and particularly the youth of Carmel. I think the idea of closing a street somewhere in Carmel is a great one. It's been so great to hear from these young people tonight that want a place to recreate safely. My problem with your presentation tonight is that you presented and used a survey demographic that does not accurately represent the legal and rightful stakeholders of the beach access, which is not simply the property owners, not only the local residents, but the people of California who appreciate access to the beaches, which belong to the people of California. Under law, the coastal act of California, these beaches belong to everyone. We know this, right? So I wish tonight's presentation had really added some color in the survey demographics and, you know, I frankly wish staff maybe had kind of tried to go out and get some additional color that they could have presented to you, the council. Your staff mentioned that this could be appealed to the Coastal Commission. I would say undoubtedly 100% would be appealed to the Coastal Commission, costing more staff time and resources. So again, I'm all for closing the street in Carmel for the, for the residents of Carmel to enjoy. I think this street is the wrong one to choose. And I'll leave you finally with a personal story. For me, I come down to Scenic Road on a regular basis to drive my friend, a resident of Carmel, for over 75 years to the beach as it's the only opportunity to get out of the house. He's not able-bodied. He's not able to get to the beach on a regular basis on his own. So he relies on this street being open 24 hours a day for access to the beach and to be able to view the same Scenic views that everyone else has afforded the ability to see. I appreciate your turn.
Thank you. Next speaker. Don't be shy.
There are several people whose devices are unmuted. They might be having issues. Star six will unmute your device. I'm not hearing any background noise from anyone right now, mayor, but, but maybe just waiting another 20 seconds. I can't imagine.
Hi Brett, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Dale Byrne. I think this is not a good idea. We have better ways to spend our first responders and cert teams' time and our city's limited funds than to shut down one of our most popular streets for limited time periods on certain days so that perhaps a few people can enjoy some type of benefit. I live in the area that would receive most of the people turned away and it would definitely be a very negative thing. We don't mind living by the beach and, and having the traffic and understand that some people come down late afternoon to enjoy the sunset. We think it's great and enjoy seeing them having a good time. But creating an artificially bad situation is not smart when cars will be forced into surrounding neighborhoods crowded onto Santa Lucia and the county's portion of Scenic confused about what's going on and angry they had to search around for someplace to park and walk just before sunset. I'm a cert volunteer and I would not want to hear the comments from those that are turned away for four hours straight. In these tough times, before this type of project gets airtime, we think there should be careful consideration given to the costs involved in evaluating it, the opportunity costs involved in having the city's understaffed planning team running around Scenic in San Antonio posting notices, staff time writing it up and tying up time at the city council meeting and so on. There are plenty of places to ride bicycles, walk and play in this town where there's little to no traffic. There are also empty parking lots at Sunset Center, Forest Theater, and lots of space at Forest Hill Park, which are not closed, by the way. I was there today checking it out. I'm sorry, but we don't think this is a good idea, not now. Let's focus on intelligently opening up our town as quickly as we can, not selectively closing down one of the most popular parts of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Next speaker.
Hello?
Hey, Sarah, seven-one-four area code. Go ahead and state your name.
Okay, hi, this is Mary Ann. I'm a coddle owner of a house on Scenic. Denying me the right of access to my own home so that people can roller blade is terribly, terribly wrong. Mr. Matisis only surveyed a small group, 43 parents of schoolkids. Parents with schoolkids in Carmel are 13% of the population. I believe that Scenic Drive is paid for by every taxpayer. The median age in Carmel is 61. 61-year-olds don't want to roller blade on Scenic. The entire community was not consulted or surveyed. The proposal says that the needs of 13% of the population can forcibly interfere with the rights of 80% of, 87% of the population. Proposal is great for kids and a disaster for the great majority. Shutting Scenic down is wrong on so many levels. I vote to forego the entire proposal.
Thank you. Next speaker.
There are a couple more phones who are unmuted, but they may be having issues. Star six will unmute your device.
Susan Bogard, can you?
Sure, Susan, go ahead.
I would just like to agree wholeheartedly with the former speaker. I think any conscientious parents who would really like to find a space for their child to roller skate, they can do so. There's the rec trail in Pacific Grove. There are the spaces in the parking lot of schools that are closed. I think this inconvenience a great many people and the expense is unwarranted.
Thank you. Thank you.
Patrick McGinnity.
Go ahead, Patrick.
Yes, thank you. I'd just like to bring to everyone's attention, if you do open up Scenic for bicycling, running, roller skating, and there is an accident, some kid gets hit by another bike or by another roller skater or something like that, what kind of liability are you going to be looking at at that point? I'm a 64-year-old man who's grown up in Carmel and I started surfing here at the age of 14. I still surf here for my exercise, but have had to switch back to surfing my longboard, which is much heavier than my shortboards were. I usually park on Scenic at the 10th Street steps for easy access to the beach. If I were to be unable to park on Scenic, it would limit my ability to go surfing and thus get exercise that I so need. Carrying my board from San Antonio would be out of the question. So then I'd ask you to keep the public road open for use. As one who used to deliver newspapers on Scenic, where the route was, and never having an accident or problems with cars, which were traveling in both directions, I know how careful, how careful the drivers are and how slow they go. Please do not limit the public access. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor, I've started a timer just so that we can allow some people some time to unmute. Say it again. Star six will unmute your device. Sometimes if your phone is not cooperating, I know personally I've had to hang up and call back in. Sounds like someone might be trying to say something.
It'd be nice. But I certainly don't want to cut off a public testimony prematurely because people couldn't get on.
Right.
Going to encourage you to do the best you can to unmute your phone or step forward and have the courage to speak, one or the other.
Perhaps maybe another 30 seconds or so, mayor. It's been a minute since we had the last speaker finished.
All righty. A minute sounds reasonable.
Well, it's been a minute and a half since the last speaker's finished.
All righty, then I will close the public comment period and bring it back to council for deliberation. Additional questions or staff or comments? Council members? I guess if, I might ask, if Paul Tomasi, chief, are you out there somewhere? Would you be able to comment briefly on your concerns or issues around enforcement, possible costs associated, that kind of thing?
Hi, mayor, thank you.
Oh, there you are.
I have a lot of concerns as your public safety director with closing any street. It creates a lot of challenges. We've closed it twice this past year for emergency reasons and it did create some challenges with getting traffic through because it's, it is a one-way road. You have a lot of residents that have to have access, whether it be someone working or deliveries or even our, let's say, our fire, ambulance, or police trying to respond. It would require a lot of work, manning, intersection at all times, and then trying to determine who would have access and who wouldn't. And so a closure doesn't mean you're stopping all traffic. You're still going to have to allow traffic to get through. And there's a false sense of security that people might have thinking that there would be no cars coming through at all when in fact there would be cars. So I just have a lot of concerns regarding the thought process and behind it. I share a lot of the concerns the county also has with this. And, yeah, from a safety perspective, I have a lot of concerns about it. So that's my opinion.
Thank you, chief. I appreciate it. Council members, thoughts, observations, questions, comments?
Mayor, it's Carrie.
Carrie.
I think, could the staff address some of those questions? I think Mr., I think it was Michael McWalters. Could the staff address some of his questions? Because I think there are some pertinent questions there. So could they do that, please?
That'd be great.
Let me take the first one, Bob, if I may. His name is Michael McWalters, council member Tice. He lives two north of Eleventh on Scenic. And I spoke with him yesterday. He has a dyslexic adult little girl, I guess, at this point in time. So we had a nice conversation. Very nice man. Anyway, the one question I want to start off with is we did close, as the chief just said, we have previously closed Scenic Road to through traffic on an emergency basis. So I did that once during COVID or twice during COVID in light of when we were closing the beach. We were closing beach access because of concerns that people were not going to be respecting the necessity to, to not socially gather and not respect social distancing protocols. As the chief has said, it was problematic at best. It was, it was, it was very intensive for our, for our officers and staff to police and dare I say, our, our white shirts, our, our public safety cert team as well was charged. And that's just really not, not, not the best role for them and nor do I want, quite frankly, the police department policing the beach. I'd rather have them catching bad guys as they do so well. So, so anyway, that was closed. There was no vote on the council's part. That was done under my authority, as vested in me by the governor, under this, under this, the horror of COVID. So that was under my emergency powers, which, which again, came from the governor, were reinforced by the city council. So there was no, no council vote. There was no roll call. But on several occasions, the council has, of course, taken, taken up issues regarding certain closures under, in the last 10 months under, under COVID. So I want to start with that question and get that one out there. That was Mr. McWalters' last question. And then maybe Mr. Harari can kindly answer some of the other questions that Mr. McWalters had.
Okay. Oh, thank you, Chip. Not that many, make sure I'm on lights on. Yeah, there it is. Not that many questions that we haven't already discussed, but one question that he brought up is of where is the survey for the, for the segment on Scenic? And we try to make that really clear. We have not done that survey. There is no such survey yet. If the council wants us to proceed with this evaluation, that would be the first thing that we'll do. So there is no, we understand that the prior survey was for a different, a different concept. We don't have a survey for, for Scenic along the, the Scenic pathway area. There was a question about how much does it cost? That was also something that we would have to evaluate. We do not know today what it would cost to implement this. Chip talked about there was no behind-the-scenes activities. There was no behind-the-scenes vote of any sort. And I think the word consensus might have been misused or misunderstood when we had the one and only meeting with the county. The consensus of those five, six, seven people on, on that call, we had the consensus was, A, it should be some form of a pilot project that would make more sense. And the other bit of consensus was that it would make more, it would make a little bit more, it would make more sense to attempt the pilot project in Carmel versus both Carmel and the county, which was that first option. There was no other formal consensus. There was no other votes. There was no anything other than the consensus of the people of that meeting. And there was a question about ADA and barricades. And yes, we'll comply with ADA, with or without barricades. And I think those are all the questions that I was able to write down.
And Bob, in the spirit of redundancy, just let me restate why we're here tonight. Is this an opportunity for any council member to bring forward a proposal to see if there's the political will of his colleagues to explore this item further and then further analyze the costs, the impacts, the process and all of that? So it would be sad in my mind if in a democratic society you had an elected representative who couldn't bring an issue that constituents was concerned with to see if there was a political will to move forward to that. If I wanted to build a nuclear power plant on Carmel Beach, I suspect I would be told that's a waste of public time. But this does have a lot of public motion to it. Does have some rationale behind it. I think it deserved at least a yes or no, up or down, thumbs up, thumbs down approach before we went and spent a lot of time, a lot of effort and a lot of public angst on something that may not be palatable to this council. That's the question before us tonight. Do we want to invest significant amount of money and additional resources and time in something that we may or may not want to do? That's the question tonight. It's very simple. And I think it's a testimony to this council that we're willing to entertain ideas, whether we like them or not. I mean, it's a part of the process. If we just said blanket no or yes, it'd be more of a dictatorship than it would be a democracy. I've always thought a dictatorship was a good idea, as long as it was a benevolent one and I was a dictator. I think a lot of people would disagree with that. So, so that said, I don't seem to have a full screen. So if you want to testify, Jeff, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, I guess as the person that brought it up, thank you both Chip and Dave for your, for your kind remarks and allowing me to, allowing me to do this. I'd like to address, before I kind of close my comments, I'd like to address, a few people have made some comments that I think I can address with my own experience. I am a 56-year-old and during these COVID times, I'm a 56-year-old slightly overweight guy. And during these COVID times, I ride my bike out on Scenic. I ride from the Pebble Beach Gate down Scenic and usually I go up Hatton Road or sometimes I come back on, on the side streets. And these are my experiences as a bike rider in town. I wear a yellow, bright green bike helmet. I wear a yellow, bright green bike helmet. I wear a colorful shirt. I have a white blinker on the front of my bike and a red blinker on the back of my bike. I like to think that I do everything I can to make myself safe. I have been a road warrior in Silicon Valley before. I like to think that I know what I'm doing. And so, so these are my experiences. On Scenic Road, I've had car doors opened in front of me that have caused me to almost fall off my bike from people that have parked and have sat in their car, so I can't see them. So I don't see them park. I have car doors open in front of me. I have people pull out in front of me from their parking spots because they don't look. I have had people stop, especially around the 12th Avenue overlook. I have had people come to a screeching stop in front of me to take that picture out of the passenger side window. On the side streets, the side streets, you know, people think that Scenic is, is kind of safe. The side streets are especially treacherous because in Carmel, a lot of the side streets, it's very difficult for people to know whether other people have stop signs or not, because we have a lot of intersections where there's one stop sign and there's not another stop sign. I've had people cut in front of me to make right turns, so I am not biking fast enough on a road. And they cut, they cut around me on the right. They cut around me on the left and then cut me off on the right. I've had people run through stop signs and almost run me over. The people that say, you know, to those that say biking is safe in Carmel, biking is not safe in Carmel. So my perspective is that, you know, as I said, I'm a 56-year-old who takes pretty good care on my bike. And it's not safe. It's just, you know, it's not. And so anything that we can do to provide a safer experience, I've always been upfront about my feelings about this, anything that we can do to provide a safer experience for people on bikes, I would welcome. And I think this is especially true for, for children who are learning to ride their bike, like I did in South Carolina on Ashley Road with my father when I was four years old, or six years old, or eight years old, however old I was. It's really important to get kids and anybody else off to this great start of having this, of having this good experience. Some people have said that they have wondered about the number of people that use, that would make, would make use of this facility. And I think we already have evidence that people do use this. I remember, you know, I appreciate that the, the shutdowns of Scenic Road were, were not very well done back in June and July. But there were hundreds of people on Scenic Road. And if you walk, you know, when I walk my dog on Saturday morning or Sunday morning back on Scenic Road, you can see people in Scenic Road running and riding their bikes and walking their dogs and pushing their strollers. So people already do these actions. You know, the things that we are talking about trying to facilitate are already done at risk to buy people who have ventured out onto Scenic Road to do these things. So I think that the demand is there. There are, I think there are valid concerns from the residents, especially the residents that live near there. Parking on side streets and, and traffic on side streets is a very valid concern. You know, I know we have, we have trouble with controlling the traffic flow and emergency vehicle access. A couple of callers mentioned, and a couple of the letter writers mentioned handicapped access. I think if we were to, you know, greenlight some sort of little, some sort of little project, of course, you know, in addition to, in addition to allowing any sort of local traffic, we would of course allow, we would of course allow people with handicap stickers on their cars to, to venture down Scenic Road. I think that, I think that, you know, I think everybody on the council would agree with me that, that that is a given. You know, I don't see, I don't see the harm, honestly, in taking this, taking this project and advancing it a little bit, having a public outreach program, you know, staff is mentioned. Staff has mentioned the Planning Commission, the Forest and Beach Commission. I would add the Community Activities Commission. I agree that coastal access is an issue. We should definitely talk to Coastal Commission staff. And the way I see this project is it's a slow-motion project. We'll get the temperature down of everybody involved. And six months from now, or eight months from now, maybe we'll be in a position to have some little pilot project for, you know, for Sunday mornings. You know, let's, let's start slow and we can see what happens. Yes.
Maybe COVID will be over by then.
Hey, hey. Mute them, Kim, Britt, on public comment, you know that.
Yes, there's a possibility that the project will be a failure. You know, I accept that. You know, we try, we try a lot of projects that don't work out. You know, we had a parking meter project downtown that some people liked and some people didn't like, but we learned things from, even from the failures. You know, the parking meter project, even from those things, we as a city evolve. We learn how to do pilot projects. We learn how to learn from our failures and from, and, and from our successes. And I think these are all valuable skills that as a community, you know, we can, we can learn to cooperate with each other. And we can learn to communicate better with each other. I think these are all skills that I think that Carmel would, would really benefit from having in its arsenal. Because this, this project that we're talking about, you know, this, this little recreation project, and I call it, I don't call it closing Scenic. I call it local traffic only. This little recreation project is a tiny project in the scheme of all of the challenges that, all of the challenges that we have facing, facing us in, you know, in, in the course of the next five or 10 years. And I think that we would do ourselves proud to, you know, go down the road a little bit and see what happens. So thank you for, thank you for, again, thank you, Dave and Chip and Bobby for, for letting me bring this forward. And I'll, I'll, thank you for, and letting me rant a little bit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Bobby, Karen?
Hello, guys.
Hi, I couldn't find my unmute button. I was listening so intently. I hate to be a spoiler, but I just cannot support this project at this time. I think that the expense is one thing. I think the fact that we only have two police officers on duty at any one time. And that would be a great burden to have them have to go down and referee and enforce at this time. I think that some of the emails that received about people who enjoy the sunset and that's their only means of getting there is by car. I think the moving of barricades by people who are a little more frail and having to get back in their car, move the car, get back out, move the barricade. I think there's just so many problems with Scenic Road. Pescadero Canyon has a road beside it, Second Avenue, that is effectively closed and barricaded at two ends. Perhaps that could be used by people, children, to bike up and down Second Avenue. The playgrounds are open. As of December 9th, they did reopen playgrounds because they found that to be an important thing. So that is open. There are a lot of parking lots around schools that are available as far as kids learning to ride bikes. I have three children. They all became bike riders, and I worried about them a lot. And I think that Carmel has an overarching problem that we need to look at in a bigger context. And that's providing safe bike lanes through our city, but not necessarily on Scenic Avenue by closing a street. I also would like to remind people that we have a potential park called Rio Park. It has become a corporation dump yard instead of a park that it should have become maybe 25 or 30 years ago. I thought my son, who's now 36, would be able to play in that park. And I haven't seen anyone play in that park yet because it hasn't been developed. We could put some attention towards that in the near future to examine how we could create another place that would be suitable for children to play. But I cannot support this project tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Bobby?
Yeah, I would not be able to support this project. There are far too many options out there for people to ride their bikes. I was just out, I wanted to see about some certain roads in Fordor. So I did go out to Fordor the other day. And off of General Jim Moore, there is a road that's completely closed off. It's closed to all cars, and it's over a mile and a half long. And it's probably more than 40 feet wide. And I think that would be a tremendous place to take somebody out to teach them how to ride a bike or roller blade or anything else. I think it would be an incredible inconvenience to all of the beachgoers, the people that want to go down and, and walk down to the sand and carry their ice chest or whatever they need to carry, or as the gentleman said, a surfboard. I think it would be incredibly expensive to the city. And the, the cost, I know that we don't have a cost attached to this, but I'm sure it would be over $1,000 a day, probably, just to set that up every day. $4,000 a month, or $4,000 a week, $16,000 a month is just something that I cannot support at this point. So, but I appreciate Jeff bringing it forward. I appreciate the, the fact that we were able to have dialogue about it. But yeah, I would not be supporting this.
Karen, did you want to say something?
Yes. Yeah, you know, I really, I understand what Jeff's saying about bike riding. I, when it's lighter in the morning, I go bike ride around Carmel. I take laps in Sunset Center Parking Lot. So that's how, so I, I understand. But I think what we need to do is we need to look at bike riding in Carmel on a bigger picture. You know, we wanted some bike lanes on San Carlos. You know, we've been pushing for safer places to have bikes in Carmel. And I think this particular project is not the place to do it because of what people have voiced. I am, I too, at this point, the cost of doing something like this, the staff time scares me right now. You know, what people don't understand is our staff with COVID have been really stretched to the limits, just like us personally. We are stretched to the limits of putting up with COVID. The staff and dealing with the public on road closures and beach closures, it is just, it's been more than we really need to add to. So that's one of my biggest concerns right now. So I, I cannot support this project. But I do support looking at other ways that we can make bike riding in Carmel safer. So thank you.
Thank you, Karen. To that point, Jeff, you've been a good champion for biking throughout the Carmel community, and I appreciate that. I'd agree that this probably isn't the right spot. One of the things that I'm concerned about is the fact that, you know, there's a lot of people that don't have the mobility that they should have to be able to get out and enjoy the beach, but they don't have a handicap sticker. And so I know a lot of people that go down to just view the beach. They can't get out of their car necessarily. Or they're just a little bit too challenged to go out and actually recreate there. I was moved by a recounting of the episode I had, when I was walking, when Jeanne and I were walking the other morning. And we bumped into one of the Carmel Carers docents that had adopted a portion of the Carmel Trail, the Scenic Trail. And she said that the other day she was down there, and this woman pulled up in her van and kind of jockeyed around a little bit and went over to say, you know, welcome to the beach and everything. And the woman said, I just want to make sure you can see okay. And she looked in the back of the van, and her husband, the driver's husband, was on a gurney in the back. It was the only chance he could get to get to the beach to see it. She said it means so much to him to be able to come to the beach and view it. It's the only chance he really gets excited during the day. He just loves coming down here. And then I said, well, you know, this isn't really a handicap spot. You're kind of stuck here. She goes, it's a great thing for him. It's a great moment for him to be able to come to the beach. So it's not just the handicap that I'm concerned with. It's everybody being able to get to the beach. Whether you want to walk it, whether you want to view it, whether you want to bicycle by. And Jeff, you know, the bicycling community, it's challenging. I agree. I mean, I understand. I've got a Vespa scooter. I get doors open on me all the time, but I've got a horn and it makes a little noise. But it's, it's a spectacular, I think we all have a passion for the beach. It's just, we want to make sure that we can keep it open. I just don't think today's the right time financially or actually physically to get, to go down this road right now. And I think we're staff constrained, resource constrained financially. And I think the, the criteria, the challenges, logistical challenges that the county faced were a good indicator of the challenges we'd be facing there. So with that said, Britt, do you want to motion on this?
I think that's up to you, but it looks like maybe that's probably the best way to, to move forward.
Via just a consensus vote.
Yeah.
So do we have a motion to deny the concept?
Make the motion that we forego the project?
Good.
I'll second that.
The motion, second, although it's in favor, we'll be saying a roll call vote, so. Britt? Jeff, in conclusion?
Yeah, just in conclusion, thank you all for, you know, obviously, I'm disappointed by, by the turnout and all of the, the result. And I'll speak to you all individually about my incredible, my incredible disappointment, and you'll all hear from me. But thank you for humoring me in this. Thank you for humoring me and Josh and everybody else in this. I really appreciate it. And thank you, Dave.
Jeff, I wouldn't say we were humorin' you, honestly. We took this very serious. Not easy to do this kind of deliberation, but it is important, part of the public process. And it's why we, you know, step forward to do the public business. It's controversies like this make government work. So thank you. All right, Britt, can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Barron?
No.
Perlito?
Yes.
Tice?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes with four yes votes, one no vote from Councilmember Barron.
That's my last day, I guess.
Well, and thank you to the, for the public, to their, for their participation, their passions. I appreciate that. Okay, we have one last item. It's a public hearing on the sidewalk vending program application fees. Chip, do you want to tee this up and then we can go?
Nothing really to add here. This is following your direction. This is consistent with having a, having a, having a fee for the sidewalk vending, which is something we can, we cannot prohibit. I would draw your attention to the top of page 321, which is where Marnie says, Ms. Waffle says, that all existing sidewalk vending permits will expire on March 1st of this year unless the renewal is applied for. So we'll be certainly reaching out to the current permit holders to, to, you know, to renew their permits if they'd like to. There's a, the new sidewalk vending application fee is $425, and then the renewal fee is $210. There's not really much else to say, Mr. Mayor.
Marnie, is there anything you want to add to this?
Nope, that covers it.
All righty, bring it back to council. Any questions of staff before I go to the public for their input? All right. Is there anybody in the public wishing to speak this item tonight?
Many people have dropped off. I just would like to maybe give a little bit of time. Right now, there's lots of muted phones, but I don't see anyone that is unmuted. I just kind of want to give a little bit.
I would think not.
Yeah, that's been, that's been about.
Hello?
Uh huh.
Yeah, no, I have a comment, kind of a question, comment.
Can you say your name, please?
Parker Logan.
Hey, go ahead, Parker.
I mean, perhaps I'm wrong, but I, I believe I've only seen one of these vendors out there. And, and she's all but disappeared after being in business for a very short time. Why would these permits be, be offered back to the permit holders since they're not even using them? It seems like it's just kind of a way that, to stop the program from happening by giving them to people who don't intend to use them. And that's kind of against the whole purpose of, of having the ability for someone to operate a business like this. But we all know who the players are. They're all restaurants, or delis, or, or grocery stores. And they're not using them at all. They never have, nor do I believe that they ever had any intention to. Has anyone seen a cart besides the lady who sold artwork around town? I don't think so. So why not pull those back away from those people who don't intend to use them and offer them up to people who do? It just seems unfair that they would have first right of refusal for something that they refuse to operate. Maybe you could answer that question.
All right. Thank you, Parker. Before I get staff to answer that question, is there anybody else wishing to testify tonight?
Mayor, I think you're probably safe moving on.
All right, I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to staff. Chip, you want to try to field that one question from Parker?
Yeah, I would. I would turn to Mr. Pire. I, I would turn to Mr. Pyrick, Mr. Mayor, but my, my response, and it could be wrong, I don't mind being wrong as you, as you're all aware. You know, permits are somewhat of a property right. Uh, and, um, and, uh, a property right cannot be eliminated without some due process. Uh, when, when the current permit holders were issued permits, they were issued permits for a, a duration. There, there was no obligation, uh, to, to, to use them, to employ them. Uh, if you have a driver's license, for example, you're not obligated to drive. Uh, so, so, uh, so that, that was the, you know, the, the kind of the promise that the council went under when we issued the, the permits. I don't agree, I don't, I disagree with, uh, with Parker, uh, that, that most of the permits are issued to people who are not employing them. That doesn't mean that, that you have the right to, to take them away at this juncture, um, council. We do have, as he said correctly, we, we have had one, uh, one permit holder who has employed her permit on a couple of occasions. She's a local resident. She lives in the village. I don't know whether she'll take it back up after, after, uh, after COVID, but, um, it's certainly not engendered the type of interest that we expected when they were initially, um, initially issued. So, um, and I would, again, Mr. Pyrick, um, what have, what have I gotten wrong, sir?
Brian? Yeah, I was looking for my, looking for my button to unmute. You didn't miss anything. My understanding is that the individuals that currently have the permits, um, applied for them on a first come, first served basis. And the ordinance does provide a limitation on the total number of permits, which you are, um, allowed to do under state law, um, to regulate the volume and the flow of traffic. Um, so my understanding is that that was the logic of the ordinance. And as a matter of fact, you had your second reading on that ordinance earlier this evening. And there is a, a staff report that appears in your packet at the beginning of page, um, 117, which, uh, includes a discussion regarding, um, SB 946, which was passed into law, uh, in, um, 2018, became effective, uh, January 1 of 2019. Gives the city the authority to regulate, um, uh, street vending and app, a program. Um, and you have one and it's the one that's been adopted. Certainly you do have the ability, if you wish, um, at some future point to revisit the, um, the ordinance, if you wish. The, um, city has, as I say, adopted the, the ordinance that this evening and you had previously adopted at your last meeting, an urgency ordinance with the same provisions. So that's the, the law, um, on why you have the, um, ordinance in effect and my understanding of the history of it. But as I say, if you, you know, wanted to revise it at some point in the future, you, you have the ability to do that.
Marnie, you wanted to say something?
Uh, yes, thank you. I just wanted to add that these are annual permits. Um, and so each year, uh, the permit holder per the ordinance has to renew the permit if they want to continue, um, having the permit. There's also additional costs that are going to be involved. So in order to renew their permits and continue on for another year, they will need to get a business license for their street vending activities. Um, if their cart is food related, they will have to maintain a health permit from the county. If they're selling other goods, they need to maintain a seller's permit from the state. Um, and they also need to maintain insurance. So there's a financial investment that is going to be required for this permit. Um, and these permit holders are going to have to decide, you know, if they want to make that investment, um, if they don't intend to exercise their, their rights under the permit.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Jeff? And then Karen?
Thank you. I, I'd like to, I have a question, um, maybe for, for Brian, maybe for Mr. Pyrick in relation to what, what Chip said. Um, and this probably isn't, uh, probably is a little bit off topic, so I'll ask Dave to forgive me. Chip made the statement, Chip made the statement about five minutes ago that, um, once we have issued these people these permits, they have a sort of a property right to renew them every year. And I realize that perhaps our ordinance has given them the right to do that. And I think we spoke about that last month. I think I, we've spoken about that before and I've raised my objections to that before and that's fine. But is there another law? Like, is there a state law or a federal law or something like that that would automatically guarantee these people that have paid their $400 or whatever fee the council sets to have the, have sort of an eternal right to, you know, based on something to renew these permits? Or could the council, could the council take their right to renew these annual permits, which I think is specified in the permit, that this is an annual permit? Could that right be, um, removed through, through a change to the ordinance?
Well, I would have to research that and get back to you. What I do know is that, um, under the state law, that you do have the ability to adopt, um, the street vending, uh, ordinance as you've done, as I mentioned in my prior comments. And I believe there was a discussion before I became city attorney about what kind of process you wanted to follow in that regard. And it included a limitation on the number of permits, um, first, um, to avoid the, uh, having an excessive number of, of street vendors. And then also a process for determining who would be entitled to the permits. And it's my understanding that the entitlement was based on, on a first come, first served basis. I don't have any knowledge myself and perhaps others do, um, that there's been, uh, other persons that have, that have applied for permits that did not receive them. Maybe there are, um, I've not heard that.
All right, thank you, Brian. Karen, you had your hand up?
Um, yes, uh, I'm a little unclear. So it's a yearly permit that you must reapply for and pay a fee in order to have that permit again. If you choose not to file to renew and pay the fee, then a spot becomes open. Is that clear? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's correct. It's a renewal, an annual renewal fee. I'm trying to think of an analogy, I, I, something, nothing coming to mind. But yes, that, if you, if you do not, uh, if you don't apply and you, uh, for a renewal of your permit, then it would go away, it would go into a pool and be available for someone else to, um, come along and, and, uh, and, and take, you know? Maybe, maybe the analogy is, of course, we have a number of, of cap to uses in our village. We have a cap number of jewelry, uh, jewelry stores. We have a cap number of, uh, uh, you know, t-shirt, uh, uh, visitor, um, shops. Uh, we have a cap, cap number of bars. So again, if, if, uh, if those permits are not exercised, if they're not used by a property owner, again, they're, they're the property of the underlying property owner, then they would be given up and someone else could come, come along and apply for them, paying the $425 fee versus the $210 renewal fee.
Okay, so if that is true, then if someone, if a notice goes out that says your permit will end as of a date certain unless you reapply.
Renew.
And, renew, renew. And that cutoff date is reached, then they could be notified, you did not renew your permit and therefore your permit is void.
Yes, ma'am.
And then someone else. So we could essentially develop a, uh, I call, you know, when you go to the, you can't get your doctor to give you an appointment right away and you get on a cancellation list, a notification list of if one becomes open, we could notify the next person on the list. And I like the idea that they're renewed on a yearly basis because if there are complaints during the year that they are operating their business, those complaints can be registered with them and re-education take place at the time they wish to renew.
Yes, ma'am.
So I, I think that, uh, you know, because this is so new to us, that a review, uh, of those permits, now, no one has exercised there, so we don't have a, any negatives. We don't have any complaints at this point. But I think to Parker Logan's, uh, issue, um, why just give them out to the same people who haven't used them? Well, we won't be giving them out to them unless they pay the new permit and sort of renew. So, uh,
Yes, ma'am.
But it does seem that it could be a little bit more transparent to the public, the dates that they, you know, these come up for renewal. And if that renewal is not forthcoming, then there would be vacancies available.
Yes, ma'am. And you will, you know, we, that's why we, that's why this is a public, you know, uh, this is a public hearing item, public hearing item. So we, we do post the notices. So hopefully it piques people's interests. Uh, we have a published notice, uh, in, in the Pine Cone. Uh, we publish and, and post, um, outside, um, outside, uh, public venues, uh, to create that, that, um, that, um, that actualization for people that, that this is, and, and hopefully again, have them get in touch with the planning department and, um, and, you know, make, you know, start the, start, start the conversation about, you know, I have an interest in this. Can you contact me if, if, if one becomes available, kind of a thing? Um, the one, the one word of caution I will offer you is that, um, the, the number, the cap on the number that we have is what we believe is a defensible number, uh, that we cannot amortize these out of existence, um, that, that we believe would be in violation of, um, of Senate Bill, uh, 946.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chip. Thank you for the question, Karen. So, uh, do we have a motion then to adopt Resolution 2021-006, approving application fees for sidewalk vending permits?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Jeff?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Dave. I would just like to say, um, I think the issue, you know, I've registered my objections to the local ordinance before, and especially I, I did note, I have noted on pre, many previous occasions, the objection that was brought up by Parker, by, sorry, by Mr. Logan, um, who, who notes that the, the 13 permits with, with, I guess, one exception are not being used. And I find that, um, I find that very problematic in, in the whole scheme of things. But I will be supporting this motion tonight because I do believe that regardless of my feelings about, um, our law, we should be charging for, for services that the, that the city provides. So my, I noted my objections to law before, but I will be supporting this motion on that basis.
Appreciate that explanation. Britt, could you call a roll, please?
Sure. Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Perlito?
Yes.
Tice?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Passes with five yes votes.
That takes care of the substantive work for tonight. Is there any desire for additional items placed on the agenda this time?
Yes. Yes, I would like to start the conversation about a planning project to bring our, um, general plan up to date. And I think that, uh, without planning, a city doesn't know where going. And, uh, some of our plan goes back to 2003, I believe. And there are things, I was just reading through the general plan the other day, there are things that are woefully out of date that I think, uh, could, uh, really benefit from a process. And I'm hopeful with the new planning director coming in that he will have some, uh, fresh ideas about that. And I also believe that it will help us in the future with some of our more difficult decisions, if we can say, what does the general plan say about this as far as giving us guidance? So I really hope you will, um, seriously take this under consideration to add it to a future agenda in the very near future, if possible, because, uh, I think it's something that we can benefit from greatly, uh, in all areas of, uh, the opportunities that this, uh, shutdown might present to us if we have, uh, planning that reflects both the things that we're learning at the Climate Change Committee and things that we've learned about the forest over the last few years and the things that we are learning about our income streams throughout the city and how we want our city to, uh, either incorporate or not incorporate outdoor dining for the future. There are so many opportunities that we have. If we have good plans, we won't be making decisions based on short-term reactive emotions. So that's my, uh, big plea for tonight. And my big ask is that we get planning. Thank you.
Understood. All right, that noted. Thank you all, guys, for our nice work. Much appreciated. And thank the public for their participation. And we stand adjourned and happy new year.
Happy new year.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Night, guys.
Happy new year.
Thank you, Parker.